I'd like to call our uh six November board meeting to order and I need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss confidential personnel matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one subsection A subsection one and subsection A subsection six and one one five C dash three one nine through three twenty one to discuss confidential student matters as provided in the North Carolina General Statutes one four three dash three one eight point one one subsection A subsection one and one one five C dash four oh two and to consult with our attorney for the Board of Education in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one subsection A subsection three.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're in closed session. (inaudible)
Need a motion to come out and close?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, everybody welcome. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. West if you'd lead us.
During me pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we'll try to hustle through this to get to some of the good stuff. PLS update?
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
All in favor? Thank you, all right. PLS update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll notice at your desk this evening, there's a PLS update from the spring of 23 as well as from August of 23. Each of the reference changes are present there in terms of the action taken either one by the policy committee, either placing it on this agenda, or it has been either micro ascribed, or it will be on the next policy committee agenda. And if there are no questions regarding the update, I'll begin with each particular policy listed.
Any questions? All right, proceed.
Under Policy 3470, Alternative Programs in Schools is a draft or first read. It's under item number D, item D rather, not number D, but letter D. Alternative Learning Programs, it specifically, as it's loading. The items listed in this, each of these here this evening has had legal review. Notice under the first or second paragraph deletes that particular paragraph and puts in language. As used in this policy in context, an alternative learning program or school may serve as the site to, one, deliver educational services required by the list of general statute to a student who is serving a long-term or 365-day suspension; two, provide concentrated support for students at risk of academic failure; and/or three, deliver educational and other services to students who are or may be disruptive to a safe and orderly learning environment in the regular setting. Language in letter B, Standards for Alternative Learning Programs, deletes those particular paragraphs in red, and the language in black is now what is referred to. Also provides for the basis of transfer, adds in new language in item C. Those were the substantial changes. You'll notice under, let me come back up. In section C, on the fourth page, it mentions that, "In all cases where a basis for transfer exists other than whether student has received due process pursuant to a recommendation for long-term suspension or expulsion, the principal and now along with the language added may recommend to the superintendent that the student be transferred to an alternative school. The principal must provide in writing, one, an explanation of the student's behavior or academic performance that is at issue; two, documentation or a summary of the documentation of the efforts to assist the student in the student's regular educational setting if applicable; and three, documentation of the circumstances that support the referral." It also says, "If the superintendent approves the transfer, the superintendent will determine the length of the student's assignment and establish all target exit dates. In addition, the principal of the regular educational setting and the principal of the alternative school shall make the necessary arrangements." As I've indicated, principals and leadership team, the minimum term that a student will serve at the alternative learning program is one semester based on the high school semester basis. If a student goes in one day after the midpoint of a semester, the student will serve that time plus the additional semester for their time of service." The other paragraphs are stricken. And adds in number two, responsibilities of school personnel at the alternative learning school or program, and also adds in process for manifestation, determination, review, as well as an appeals process. And those are the major substantive changes of that policy. Happy to entertain any questions or comments the board members may have.
What I'd like to do, we have a lot of first reads here, does anybody have any questions at all on any of the policies that are here for first read tonight?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I'm more than willing to go through each one of those, but the language is there, it's been reviewed, one by the North Carolina School Boards Association, which writes policies, as well as by the policy committee, and of course ample time from the board to review those ahead of time. I'll be happy to take any questions any board members may have about any of the policies listed.
Any questions? Okay, what I'd like to do then is combine 3D through 3R and move on. Any problems with that? Can I get a motion to do so?
You don't, you don't need one.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on then. All right, moving on then to Paula, to 3S, Support for McKinney v. Vento Families.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Richard. I'm very honored to introduce to you Pastor DJ Coles, who is a founding and CEO member of the Four Day Movement. As you know, federal programs collaborates with families who have been designated as homeless, and they are then status as McKinney Vento. In our federal funding, we have avenues where we can provide hygiene products, clothing vouchers, school supplies, but often these families are in crisis. Tonight, he is going to come and share with you some of the plans for future collaboration, not only with our McKinney Vento families, but with the community at large. Pastor Coles?
Good evening, School Board, Chairman, Dr. Richard. It's a pleasure to be before you. I have about 12 minutes, and I would do my best to be concise in our presentation. I pastor here at Cornerstone Church, I'm the associate pastor, after spending 22 years at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base as their civilian contracted chaplain. After leaving the base, we really began to ramp up our nonprofit, which is now 10 years old. It's called the Four Day Movement, and, I'm gonna go and skip that slide. One thing that we have seen an uptick on since COVID is a lot of people who are houseless, and a lot of people who are living paycheck to paycheck and are one paycheck away from being homeless. We have housed very recently a family that was from our school systems. We worked with a mom and four of her children that were sleeping in a vehicle. So we are in the process of a mini-capital campaign to initiate a very innovative model here in Wayne County. It's called the portal. It's important, I think, that you understand what Four Day Movement is. Our mission is to enrich and empower the underprivileged and then those falling through the cracks of life. We connect their needs to the proper resources. We're divinely designed to help people who are struggling, and we harness the power of the community to provide short-term fundamental needs. Our pillars are Project ACE, where we work in assistance in crisis and emergency. That's our largest pillar. Then we help in serving and assisting veterans and elderly. Most of that is food insecurity and sheltering. We work with our athletes in Wayne County and FCA. If they don't have cleats, we put them on their feet, or if they don't have gear to play sports, we help with that. And then E4, we work with their enrichment, empowerment, education, and their employment. We operate three different legacy houses in Goldsboro. One's called the Johnson Legacy House, in which we house males and females in a dupe place coming out of homelessness. Second is a Newby Legacy House, which is named after a former Wayne County Public School Personnel, and he now is one of the top owners of solar companies. His name is Steve Newby. And this house houses young men, and now even some of the older men who are dealing with homelessness. We help rehabilitate them and then get them into permanent supportive housing. And then last is the TNLH, and this was born in 2019, where we house women coming out of DV or women that are homeless. And they're here in Wayne County, and you may have never heard of them, and we're glad you haven't. We like to keep people very safe. They're safe haven houses, and most of our clients normally are on the front page of the paper. We normally will get them within about seven or eight days of their hotel stay running out, and we house them until they're able to be on their feet, rehabilitated, and into permanent supportive housing. We do Thanksgiving initiatives, so we'll be feeding on the 20th and the 21st. We like to mention stuff like that to show you the broadness of what we do. The 20th is focused on our troops. We normally will go down to the flight lines during the second shift, because the suicide rate at our base has been compromised sometimes. So we feed our troops early before Thanksgiving, and we sew into them and say hello. And then we go and feed our homeless on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving here in a designated location. We do a Four Day Giving Tree Initiative. That's where we go, and we normally will take care of the families that fall through the cracks. So these are the ones that didn't make it to the other initiatives, and then we'll get their names from a myriad of different contacts. And then we normally take care of the families that nobody sees, and they get their Christmas in a wonderful way. We began with the chat program that started about three and a half years ago, where we would have a water bottle, and we started going and entreating our homeless populations. So if you've seen people holding signs on the corners, on every single corner, over in the Walmart area, over in the laundromat area, in Tent City, over behind Ollie's, in Rosewood, in Mount Olive, and in Dudley, we've entreated quite a few of them. We started with the water bottle, and our Community Homelessness Action Initiative was to go and just introduce ourselves, because you have to have trust in the homelessness community. We have found that. And build relationships so they'll even talk with you. I may continue. In Wayne County, the homelessness rates have risen significantly since COVID, and sheltering and feeding have become more and more of a challenge. We have the data to show, and we don't share that data often, just because we have done the work, but now it has become as if somebody has turned on a sink and it's now overflowing. It's coming from every angle, and it's coming from multiple counties of people that are dealing with homelessness. And homelessness doesn't look exactly what you may think it looks like. Homelessness may be a single male or female that are dealing with addiction. It may be an intact family where the dad is there, the mom is there, they're both working, and they just can't meet their needs, and they have had to go to a different living environment. It may be a person that has mental health challenges, that has just been walking around and falling through the cracks. And so we have just seen a major uptick in the homelessness here in Wayne County, definitely since COVID. So we were taking care of people in hotels. We were working with multiple local hotels to keep people housed, and then our legacy houses, and then it just became a very large expense. And I don't know about you, but I am now starting to see the homelessness to encroach upon our residences and our commerce. So as we started to see that, and we've been working with law enforcement, we've been working with Wayne Community College, the hospital, to try and come up with some kind of a model that would work, we ourselves, I'm never afraid to mention, I went and prayed. I said, "God, we just need something to help us." And I don't ever deny my faith, because he is my source. And there was a nursing home that was empty as of August 2021. So shortly after we found out about that nursing facility, some of you may be familiar with it. It's actually on this road. It's at the end of Royal Avenue, on the corner of Royal Avenue and Wayne Memorial. It's now been sitting empty since August of 2021, and we have been in conversation with the Woodards now since June of 2022. Very large conversation. It's a 62-unit facility that we have been inside. We have been on every single corner of this particular facility, and we now have an offer to purchase this facility. We call it the portal. The portal is a model where you take an individual and/or family, and you do wraparound services around that particular family or individual so they can move towards self-sustainability, and we help rehabilitate them with love. This is called Place of Restoration, Transformation, Accountability, and Love. So the mission of the portal is to provide temporary supportive housing, hope, and resources to members of our community who are seeking to overcome homelessness or displacement. And please note the word "overcome," because we're gonna give a handout, we're not gonna give a handup. We're gonna give a handup, we're not gonna give a handout. Excuse me. Just wanted to see if you were awake.
Cut my, cut my eye.
We're gonna give a handup, not a handout. That means if they want help and they're ready to turn things around, we're gonna be there for them. And we're gonna get everything from their documentation in order, to we're gonna make sure they have something to eat, we're gonna make sure they have a place to sleep, we're gonna make sure that they are loved on by the different pieces of this community, whether it be healthcare, mental health. We're gonna attach them to every single resource, and we have met deep dive with many of those resources here in Wayne County. Our vision is to set our homeless or displaced community members on a path towards transformed lives and sustainable permanent housing. And then last but not least, our purpose is to navigate our displaced community members away from homelessness by providing hope. The location of the property, if you've never seen it, it's a 60-bed, 62, to be specific, 16,561 square feet. It has two additional houses on the east side of the campus, and the campus is confined within a sparse residential area. People ask me, I say it's gonna look like a resort and a military base had a baby. That's my description. The resort, because we want it to be nice enough for them to come and be comfortable while they are there, but it's gonna be like a military base, because it's gonna be very safe. And we're not gonna play games with people that are on the campus. So the visual is, if you're there, you're gonna be up by a certain hour. You're gonna go, and it's gonna be quiet by a certain hour, and then you're gonna go during the day, and you're gonna be getting every single goal that you have to meet, every day. So that's our, the estimated purchase price is $900,000 on the facility. If you could continue, please. So just a little picture of it, the facility is intact, there are beds, there are, there's stuff all over the place in there. So we will be using some of the leftover furniture within there, some of it will be removed. You can continue, because this is just a quick little pictorial. There is a full commercial kitchen in there with freezers and refrigerator, which is amazing. So that cuts down on our startup costs. There are washers and dryers in the facility. So a lot of our startup costs would be cut with the acquisition. Here's some of the pictures, you may go ahead and continue. So we've had a planning phase, a quiet phase, and a physical phase. The planning phase really was over a year. The quiet phase was about three months of us doing our due diligence. I've gone and experienced and visited over five different facilities that are like this in different areas. The one closest to ours is in Wilmington, the Good Shepherd. And then I went to the one in Greenville, which is fairly close. And then I went and saw a nursing home, so I could look at standard operating procedures, because of the size of what we would be doing. So I've gone and done my due diligence in terms of homework, and then we would be bringing in some additional staff. Some would be contracted out, and some would be onsite staff with 24/7, seven days a week, eight days a week security, onsite. Snapshots of when, just some of the things we've done. We've had our capital campaign, which launched. We have done just different things. If you'll go to the next screen, which is the most important times. Right now, we have where we did a pastors' portal luncheon. So we've had two luncheons with pastors with the faith-based community, so we could inform them what was going on, very receptive. Capital campaign, we went and had a golf tournament. We have had, we have a lunch, a dinner on November the 16th, which is very critical, and we have some information about that. It will be at the firehouse. Then we have state allotments. So we have met with the state, and there are some allotments that are gonna be dropping, and we are thankful that we're gonna be recipients of some of those. The secured funding for the location, we continue to look at every level, from grants, federal, state, donors, fundraising, we will explore every single one of those. And we've also met with a particular funding source, so we can go ahead and secure the building. And then the projected opening, we're hoping between January or March of 2024. And we really realize, we really believe that is a reality. So how to acquire it? Everybody always wants to know how you're gonna acquire it. So $50,000 we've already raised, then $850,000 we are doing by either creative financing and/or we have some other dollars that we are looking from different sources, grant and state funding. Then 450K towards essential programming. This is how we'll lay it out where we need at the building. Then there'll be upgrades, and then there'll be essential programming. Please continue. So this is not as important, but I would say it's gonna take everybody in this room and beyond. If you would give a dollar to 10 to 20 to 30 dollars, will be critical. We've come up with a gift range chart to show how we'll be able to not only purchase it, but program it. The number one question we've had over and over and over again is, how are you gonna sustain it? Well, it will take our community to raise this baby, and it's also gonna be us, which we've been doing. We have talked to people even out of state in terms of donors and funding. So I can get more specific in a different time and location, but as far as the funds, we are entreating that at a very, very deep level. You can continue. And those, those were the gift ranges that we would go for, and that should be close. I did wanna put up here the Sustainable Monthly Recurring Funding Program that we have, the one-time ongoing specialized state and federal funds, the ancillary funding that we will be going after, and then the room and board revenues. There's one particular wing, the one that has the people coming out of substance misuse disorder. That one will be subcontracted with the employees, and also we'll have a way that we can have revenue, because we'll be charging for the residency there. So there are streams of revenue that we have created very creatively. We're gonna be having the VA involved and all the other names that are up there. But for time purposes, I'm very thankful that I've had the opportunity to at least present it to you. I think I've done that in a canned version, so. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, I've obviously met with Reverend Coles and Dr. Artis when we first came by Central Services to discuss this particular project, and I for one am very pleased with your efforts and your work to improve the community. Working towards helping individuals find housing has a direct correlation and impact with our children that we serve, and so I'm grateful for your efforts and your work. And especially transforming a building here in Goldsboro will be a tremendous effort. And so thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also recognize our Director of Operations and our Vice President, who is here today, supporting what we're doing, and a special thank you to all of you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Capturing Kids' Hearts Professional Development Plan.
Good evening, members of the board, board chair, Dr. Richard. I bring to you tonight the contract for our private school, which is Wayne Christian Private School, which is Capturing Kids' Heart. They are utilizing the Title II Professional Development Funds to provide professional development to their teachers. And this is the selected contract that I am providing to you. This is a returning contract that they utilize to continue services for professional development to their teachers. As you see, the capturing kids' proposal there is $43,645, and they will be utilizing the services throughout the year for their professional development funds, using our Title II funds here in Wayne County Public Schools. This is for your review and approval tonight.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none?
Do you have this as an action item also, if I can be later?
It should, is that under action?
It's not under action items, that's why I'm asking.
It should be action for approval.
Yeah, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add this contract, Capturing Kids' Hearts, as an action item?
Chairman, I make the motion to amend the agenda to include Capturing Kids' Hearts Professional Development Plan under Board Action.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor? Any questions on the program itself? And it has done legal review?
Your prior contracts with them have had legal review. This one hasn't gone to us specifically.
It's reoccurring.
It's reoccurring.
It is, it's a continuum.
Then if it's operating under the same contract, you'll be fine on that.
It is.
You don't have to do a contingent on you.
You can do it, you can pass it pending legal review in case there's any questions.
I need a motion to pass this approval pending legal review.
So move, Mr. Chair.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna move our public, go into our public comment session. And Mr. Joyner, do we have anybody for public comment today?
Yes, sir. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is often, is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, and complaints about performance of school personnel in planning, implementing of board policy, the quality of the educational programs or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest from the public. However, obscene, vulgar, or profane statements and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of this meeting shall not be permitted. An organization or delegation representing the same topic is encouraged to select one individual to make a presentation on its behalf. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentations will generally not be added upon at the time it is received, but will be considered for potential action in the normal course of business. Individuals with concerns or complaints are strongly encouraged to initially seek a response from the school district official responsible for the program or facility, or from the superintendent. Any person who wants to distribute written material or handouts to the board is directed to leave those items at the speaker's podium for the board's clerk to retrieve and deliver to the board members. We have one person who has filled out the request to appear before the board. Alex Asbun, wishing to speak about allowing all high school students the option of participating in interscholastic athletics in Wayne County.
Good evening, Chairman, board members, Superintendent. I would like to also introduce Chris. He's supporting this petition among all the other signatures that you see in, in front of you.
Good evening, Chair.
Good morning, how are y'all doing today? I'll take over for this right fast. It's quickly, we would like to... It's quickly, we would like to request that all schools have the option, their students have the option to participate in interscholastic sports. I know from a soccer coach, coach, a travel league, that not all students are going to play in travel ball where they're going to get looked at for college. I also know that there's some from Rosewood and Acox that were playing for the state championship not here long ago. Ro Acox playing tonight, that not everybody on that team is going to go to college. They just want to play with teammates and have that team feeling. And we also know that you guys work as a team to get things done. And that's one way to teach things is interscholastic, interscholastic sports is teamwork. And there's schools, the Wayne, the Wayne Early Middle College High School does not allow that. And I'm sure there's specifics that we could work out at a later date and time if they were just allowed the opportunity to participate. And I'm using soccer because I'm biased with soccer. All right, Chelsea won tonight for the first time in a while. But hey, they beat Tottenham. And so we're, I'm using that as an example of some of these students. I know their workload is strong, but it's not any different than some of the other schools that go. My child, he goes to St. Mary's. He's eleven years old. He has a tremendous workload that he carries. But he plays travel soccer and right now he's at basketball practice too. And he's going to get home and it's up to us to make sure that he gets these things done. So we're just asking that you consider it. We can work out the specifics much, at a much later date. We just want to know why they can't and they should be allowed that opportunity. It's almost denying somebody that opportunity of a little bit of a different high school field because they're in a different environment. We get that, we understand that, and that is their choice. But they still should be allowed to have that opportunity to participate in high school sports. And like I said, if it just gets approved, then maybe we can one day sit down and say, hey, you know, does the schools have a draft or can they go to another school and play on their team? Or however, we can, you know, work that out and figure it out. But I think that they should just be allowed that opportunity and not be denied. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we've got a, a big crowd in here that we're going to be doing some board spotlights now. So I think I'll get the ball rolling initially here.
Do you want me to read the statements as you go?
These are separate from that one. This is a board spotlight. North Carolina State Fair, we have a Best in Show Art Competition winner. In October, Ms. Pabon was recognized by the North Carolina State Fair with a Best of Show designation for an art piece submitted in the art competition. Ms. Pabon competed against entries from across North Carolina. Judging was based on the following criteria. Number one, impact, effect on the viewer, and catches the eye and holds the attention, mood, and storytelling techniques. Number two, composition, arrangement, completeness, and balance of picture elements. Number three, technical quality, sharpness, clarity, et cetera. And number four, workmanship, prepared, mounted neatly and securely to meet requirements. It is worth noting that Ms. Pabon's artwork also won Best of Show at the Wayne County Regional Agricultural Fair in September. And as a result of receiving Best in Show at the North Carolina State Fair, Ms. Pabon received a twelve-hundred-dollar check and had her artwork displayed for hundreds of thousands of attendees to view during the eleven-day fair. Ms. Pabon, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you on your outstanding achievement. And we're excited that your artistic talents earned you the Best of Show at the North Carolina State Fair. And if you'd like, you can walk around and everybody at the tables there will say hi and congratulations.
We don't have a problem, right?
Good job, that's awesome, that's awesome.
Congratulations, thank you for representing us. Would, thank you so much, thank you. Would Greenwood Middle's principal, Nelson Cunningham, along with any other staff or representatives of the school, please come forward? Okay. Nice-looking crowd. The North Carolina ESEA Distinguished School Recognition. Because of its efforts to close the achievement gap, Greenwood Middle was recently recognized as a top-ten school for North Carolina in the National ESEA Distinguished Schools Program. The school was recognized at a special awards luncheon in Greensboro hosted by the North Carolina Association of Federal Education Program Administrators. The National ESEA Distinguished Schools Program is a project that publicly recognizes qualifying federally-funded schools for positive educational advances and the outstanding academic achievement of their students. ESEA has three recognition categories. Greenwood Middle received a Category Two recognition, which focuses on closing the achievement gap between subgroups consistently for at least two consecutive years. It is worth noting that because of its academic achievement and upward academic trajectory, Greenwood Middle moved from a D-school classification to a C-school during the 2022-2023 school year. It was also recognized for placing in the top fifty percent or higher of schools in the state for academic growth last year. Mr. Cunningham, on behalf of the board, we would like to congratulate you, your staff, and especially your students for your school's academic achievement and for being recognized as a top-ten school for North Carolina in the National ESEA Distinguished Schools Program. Do you want that, that sheet?
We're going to get a kiss too. Congratulations, congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, man, proud of you. Congratulations, brother. Quite an honor.
Congratulations. Great job.
So Tommy, if you'll go up? All right. Next up is going to be all our representatives, our schools that met growth this past year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the next category of academic growth recognition, I would like to say with the principals who are serving at the following schools, please come forward to stand on behalf of your students and staff. Carver Elementary, Carver Heights Elementary, Dillard Middle, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Fremont Elementary, Grantham Elementary, Greenwood Middle, Mount Olive Middle, Norwayne Middle, Northwest Elementary, Rosewood Elementary, Rosewood High, Rosewood Middle, Spring Creek Elementary, Spring Creek High, Spring Creek Middle, Wayne Early Middle College High School, and Wayne School of Technical Arts.
That's good, we're running out of room.
Mr. Chairman, as part of the recent North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Accountability Results Release, these eighteen schools were recognized for meeting or exceeding academic growth during the 22-23 school year. Academic growth is a valuable indicator of the school's impact on students' learning. Academic growth is calculated using achievement scores from state end-of-grade and end-of-course assessments. While achievement scores are a reflection of student performance at a single point in time, academic growth recognizes improvement over multiple points in time. The following schools were recognized for meeting growth, meaning they made an expected school year's worth of growth in a school year's worth of time. Carver Heights Elementary School, Dillard Middle School, Eastern Wayne Elementary, Fremont Elementary, Mount Olive Middle, Rosewood Elementary, Northwest Elementary, Rosewood High, Spring Creek Middle, Wayne Early Middle College High, and Wayne School of Technical Arts. Congratulations to each of those schools.
Mr. Sanders, if you'll hand those out?
The following schools were recognized for exceeding growth, meaning they exceeded an expected year, school year's worth of growth in a single year's worth of time. Carver Elementary, Grantham Elementary, Greenwood Middle, Norwayne Middle, Rosewood Middle, Spring Creek Elementary, and Spring Creek High School. We're especially pleased to report this evening that a number of our schools placed in the top fifty percent or higher of schools in the state for academic growth last year.
You'd like to give those certificates at this time?
I'm pleased to state that Northwest Elementary, Spring Creek Middle, Wayne Early Middle College High, and Greenwood Middle placed in the top fifty percent of schools in the state for academic growth. Carver Elementary and Spring Creek High placed in the top twenty percent of schools in the state for academic growth. Norwayne Middle, Rosewood Middle placed in the top fifteen percent of schools in the state for academic growth. Let's, let's say that again, say that again. Norwayne Middle and Rosewood, let me mess up, and Rosewood Middle School placed in the top fifteen percent of the schools in the state for academic growth. As good, as good as that is. Positive press is really what makes the day. And there's a lot of positive things going on in Wayne County Public Schools. Let me say these, these last two here for you. Grantham Elementary and Spring Creek Elementary placed in the top five percent. All of these folks here, all of these leaders and the teachers that stand behind them, teachers that stand behind them, the support staff that stands behind them, people driving the bus, people serving the meals, people keeping the buildings clean, all of those folks in what, what goes on for our schools are a testament to the positive things going on in Wayne County Public Schools. Keep your head up high, I'm proud of the work you're doing. You're a great testament for what's going on in life for our children and our schools.
All right, let's walk around.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Congratulations. A dollar, ask bucks. Congratulations. Great job, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Marty. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, y'all.
You're, you're a stud. Congratulations, CJ.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, brother, yeah. Congratulations, Tammy, Tammy. Might go in my hand, please.
All right, we've got two more.
Two more?
All right, we've got two more.
One's a proclamation.
Good job there, Doc, Doc, nice, nice line.
Could Ms. Sarah Irick please step forward?
And her principal also, I'm sorry, there you are. And the little, and the real boss, right? You're the real boss. Okay. Ms. Irick was recently named the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, or NCAT,'s 2024 Empowered Beginning Teacher of the Year for the Wayne County Public Schools. The NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year Program was developed to honor beginning teachers and to retain teachers who showed promise as excellent teachers and educational leaders in North Carolina's public schools, in public charter schools. Ms. Irick will now compete against other beginning teachers from across the state who were also named a NCAT Empowered Beginning Teacher of the Year by their school district or charter school. Finalists in the NCAT program will be named in December. Her principal, Ms. Sheila Wolf, states, Ms. Irick's evidence a strong work ethic coupled with excellent classroom management and an uncanny ability to develop positive relationships with her students. Ms. Wolf also considers her to be an asset to the students, the school, and the Northwest Elementary community. Ms. Irick, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you on receiving this NCAT recognition and wish you the very best as you move on to the next stage of this award program. So we have a certificate of recognition that states, Ms. Sarah Irick for being named the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, 2024 Empowered Beginning Teacher of the Year for Wayne County Public Schools, given this date November sixth, and it's signed by our Board Chair and our Superintendent. Thank you very much for what you do.
Congratulations. That's right, thank you. I know you pride your mom, aren't you?
Finally, Mr. Chair, personally, we have a proclamation, please.
All right.
Mr. Dirksen?
Um, Mr. Dirksen, are you the one I should invite to come up for this? Federal program. Gotcha, thank you. Proclamation. Whereas we recognize that the children of Wayne County are our most valuable resource, that a sound education is the key to producing the next generation of successful, productive, and conscientious citizens, and whereas the parents are their child's first and most influential teachers, and our parents have hope and goals for their children, and whereas it is important for schools, early learning settings, and the community to welcome families, to plan for parent and family engagement, and to provide meaningful ways for parents to be involved in their child's learning, and whereas when schools, parents, families, and communities work together in partnership, our students succeed. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Education partners with those that support, enhance, and celebrate the growth of our children, including various faith and community-based organizations, colleges, and universities to promote ideas, education, and resources to support parents and families in the full participation of the educational journey of their children. And whereas it is appropriate that the Wayne County Board of Education pauses to recognize the outstanding contributions made by parents and families of the child who fosters a love of learning, and to recognize educators who acknowledge the importance of parent and family engagement, and to take action to make it an integral part of the school community. Now therefore, we, the Wayne County Board of Education of Wayne County Public Schools, to hereby proclaim, proclaim November two thousand twenty-three as Parent and Family Engagement Month. In the county of Wayne, we urge all citizens to join with us in this recognition of the important roles of parents, the important role parents have in their children's lives, education, and school community. Dated this day, the sixth date of November two thousand twenty-three, signed by our board chairman and our superintendent. Thank y'all very much, much appreciated.
Think it'd be a lot. Good job, sir.
Well done, well done. All right. Soon as the rockus dies down. Yeah. I could do this kind of stuff all night. All right, moving on. Going into board action. For A, Policy Thirty-six, twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Policy Thirty-six, twenty Extracurricular Activities and Student Organizations, you'll notice that there's a couple of changes in that particular policy on page two. Uh, under number three, Athletic Participation by Home School Students, it adds in language for middle grades six through eight and language for high school interscholastic athletics. If they comply with the following, the following articulated uh, in letter format under H, it also adds language that students in high school must comply with all other applicable North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules and regulations, and it also updates uh, the date of enactment or adopted by the board. Happy to entertain any questions the board might have.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any of the comments, none? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, Policy Forty-two, twenty-three slash seventy-two, thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular policy deals with pregnant and parenting students as well as employees. Adds a new section A for students as well as talks about the specifics relating to students. And under section B for employees, it states specifically that the board prohibits discrimination in employment on the basis of pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions. Pregnant and nursing employees will be provided accommodations as required by law. Under number one, reasonable accommodations for pregnancy-related limitations, and it articulates those, as well as for break time to express milk, updates the legal references as well as the adoption date. Happy to entertain any questions the board might have regarding that particular policy.
Any questions? Second read? Need a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item C is Policy Forty-one, thirty-one, as recommended by Legal Counsel Lottery and Admission Process. Uh, it is a recommendation uh, from administration that this particular policy be repealed.
Okay, is there any comments, questions? If there are none, I need a motion to approve the repeal.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, RHA Health Services Contract.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Richard, we have before you tonight our contract with R A H. This company serves our most vulnerable disabled students. Uh, Ms. Emerson is here to answer any questions. The school system just, does serve as a run-through, so there is no financial obligation on our part, but we do collaborate with this agency to support these students. It has been legally reviewed.
Are there any questions regarding the current contract between Wayne County Board of Education and R H A Services for our students? There are currently eight students who are residing in this facility, and this, this is paid through O sixty-three monies. You can see it there in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, fifty-five dollars, twenty cents.
And this is for the, the full year for the eight students?
Yes, yes. It, we pay for all the services, yes, sir.
And these are the students that need constant...
Yes, these are students who reside and live at the facility that is located in our county. It is known as Howells Childcare.
Yes.
I think it's Walnut Creek Facility, yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Um, I will note...
I'm so sorry, Alice.
I was gonna note for the board that this is actually listed uh, two times on your board agenda today. It's in your CNI purchase orders, and it's listed as its own separate item.
And it has been legally reviewed.
We will uh, approve this and take it out of the CNI. All in favor?
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. You want to stay with a motion?
You, you had a motion to approve the R H A contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the Needs-Based Capital Fund Grant.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Dr. Richard Superintendent, members of the board. It's a pleasure and honor I get to present to you our next item, which is item E, Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant. As you are probably aware, um, we had the privilege of a couple years ago to receive a grant in the amount of thirty million dollars for Fremont Elementary School, and we have been excited about that project as it comes to a conclusion, hopefully here at the beginning of next year. Some of you have asked, and this has come through Facilities Committee coming to you, when would the next grant window be opened that we could apply for a new grant opportunity? Uh, with the budget being delayed by the General Assembly, that grant opportunity was delayed as well. Uh, you have a couple items for your information within board docs. Uh, one of those is a page I took out of the manual for this grant that shows that our window is now beginning to open. The window for this Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant will open November thirteenth and close January fifth, if we would like to pursue this opportunity. Also, I shared uh, some things in there that shows uh, what the criteria is for this grant to be able to apply, as well as the amount that we are eligible for as well. So Wayne County is again eligible for thirty million dollars when it comes to asking for funds for the elementary school with a five percent match from the county funds, which is one point five million dollars on that amount, which is what uh, it was again last year as well. Uh, there are some criteria as well that shows that if we have a shovel-ready project ready to go, that we could potentially move up uh, in that list as well. So this comes you through Facilities uh, to ask for your approval for us to number one, apply for the grant for Brogdon Primary School. Uh, the grant does have wording in it that likes to know if our project is within our um, plan that we turn into the state every five years, and Brogdon Primary, of course, is within that plan, our facilities plan. Uh, and then also to expedite the plan uh, or the grant application, the grant does ask if we have a shovel-ready project. So there's, the second ask is, uh, we have been pleased with our Pinnacle Architecture Design Buildings, our prototypes that we have done in Meadow Lane and at Fremont, and if we would like to pursue this grant for Brogdon Primary, I would ask that the board please consider that we look at that prototype design again, because that would be something ready to go. The plans are ready, and we would just need to place it on that site. So this comes to you as a request for your approval uh, to apply for this grant for Brogdon Primary School and to use our prototype uh, Pinnacle Architecture, Middle, uh, Elementary Design that we have done twice now.
Chairman, I make a motion, will you approve item E? Second.
I have a motion in a second, any other comments? I did, I did have one thing. You said there would be a, a five percent match.
Yes, sir.
But farther down in matching requirements, it's a one for three, it says.
Well, if you, the documents, Mr. Chair, that I added at the very back, those, it has the...
The new change.
Yes, sir, the new change, and it shows the counties and their wealth level and what percentage of Wayne County is. It shows that Wayne County is a five percent match from the commissioners on that.
That's all I had.
Yes, sir, that's a great question.
All, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, members of the board and, and Mr. Chair. We'll get started on that right away. Um, our next item coming to you is item F, looking at our demographic study for Fremont. As you are aware, uh, that will be completed coming up in January, and we need to look at uh, being able to assist you with our realignment in that area between our schools up there. Uh, this comes to you as a proposal from Proper G I S to conduct uh, this study for you and to give you some options in the northern end of our county when it comes to the district lines for Fremont. I'll let Dr. Richard add anything if he would like to.
So as a part also of the work of the Strategic Initiatives Commission that will be meeting this week, uh, which is from a cross-spectrum of individuals from across the community, we'll also take a look at some of the recommendations from Proper uh, and what they recommend. I want this to be a very transparent, above-board, completely out in the open of the community with what we do with redrawing the attendance lines to populate Fremont. And so, um, again, based on the past track record of Proper and the work that they've done for the district, the familiarity, uh, they're able to provide uh, the resources that are needed for the redistricting effort for that school. Uh, it is my recommendation to the board uh, that we go and contract with Proper to produce the necessary results for the redistricting.
Now, you've been on the board the longest, Mr. West, and we've, have worked with Proper before, I presume.
Yes, and they, they, they did a, a next, I, I think, a great job. The last time we involved, we what, we had twenty-five people on that committee? And we met three or four times with the full committee, and then they presented us with um, three or four different um, versions of their recommendations. Um, I think that because they have done some pretty extensive work for us, what, four years ago, three years ago, that the cost to us this year is gonna be a minimal for what they're doing, so I think they're just gonna, um, you know, update their numbers and that's gonna be a big help for us, that they've already been in the district working.
Okay, very good. So I, we'd need a motion to move forward with this.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Just a motion to accept the proposal and to develop a contract?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The next item I have is item G, Driver's Education Contract Approval. As you probably remember, you approved the low bid for the driver's education uh, back this summer, and now we just need to approve the contract. This is a standard contract, has been reviewed by legal, so asking your approval on this tonight, please.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the driver's ed contract. Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Richard. For item H this evening, I'm presenting a purchase order for the Learning Internet Incorporated, otherwise known as learning.com at the school level. Uh, learning.com provides us with K eight digital literacy curriculum that we utilize in order to help our schools stay SIPA compliant as it relates to E-Rate. This is funded out of state PRC seventy-eight by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction due to the district's tier-one status. Uh, the amount for this year is ninety-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents, and I am asking for your approval this evening.
This covers all our elementary and middle school?
Elementary and middle school, yes. And I, I do wanna reemphasize, the funding is provided to us by the D P I.
All right, any other comments? Need a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion in a second? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm presenting on behalf of the Restart School, Goldsboro High School. We have one purchase order for Advanced Signs and Services Incorporated. This is for an electronic sign um, coming out of their state restart funds, and the amount of this requisition is for thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the Restart Purchase Order. Second.
Motion in a second? It's been through finance, been through legal, it's all good.
This has not had legal review, but from looking at it, I don't think it would need it.
Okay. Do we need to make it in pen, pending, just in case?
You can make it pending if you'd like to.
Okay.
I'll make my motion, pending legal review, we approve the Restart Purchase Order. Still a second.
And a second? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, tonight, um, I have twenty-seven donations bringing to the board for approval. The monetary value of these donations equate to twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, the non-monetary value at five thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. This brings our total year-to-date monetary value of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, and a non-monetary at thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the donations, and thank everyone for giving them.
Absolutely. The, uh... The generosity of our local people and our local businesses and our churches and community support groups still, it never ceases to amaze me how, how generous they are, so. We have a motion in a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Richard, members of the board. I'm here tonight to present the District Improvement Plan for your approval of its draft and also the drafts of the school improvement plans. I'd ask that Ms. Nguyen and Mr. Smith come forward in case you have any questions for their grade span. We are under a new process this year because of different mandates from the Accountability Program. To date, we have met all of those um, deadlines, including but not limited to parent notification, posting the sign, the uh, school improvement plans and the district improvement plan on the website for parental input, and having a presentation for you and giving you the required time to review those plans. Uh, we have a focus this year of making sure that we exit uh, low-performing status through data-driven instruction, excellence in teaching and leadership, culture of high expectations, data-driven instruction, excellence in teaching and leadership, culture of high expectations, frequent and intensive tutoring, and an emphasis on core area subjects. Are there any questions about any of the plans? And I know Dr. Witcher wants to add some other information to provide you in your consideration.
Members of the board, I have made no small effort in letting everyone know how displeased I am that Wayne County Public Schools has made it into district-wide school improvement. I've also vowed that we're going to be one and done in that particular category. All of our efforts this year will be doubled. I have made it a requirement of all senior leadership at Central Services that everyone has a goal or more that are related to improving the academic performance of our schools. Each of our low-performing schools will meet monthly with myself and senior leadership to review their status in working towards coming out of low-performing status, as well as unannounced walkthroughs by myself and either announced or unannounced by senior leadership throughout the district. We've announced a series of non-negotiables that will move the needle academically for our district. And so I'm proud, I've read through these plans, I have looked through, we've been collaborative in putting together our district improvement plan, very proud of the hard work of the Curriculum and Instruction Division in working towards this particular plan that's put forth for your consideration this evening. I believe you will be pleased with the outcome this year and what our schools do. Tonight, I'm looking for next year, the recognition that we gave for our schools, to be many more joining that platform that either meet or exceed growth in what we do for this year. I believe in our schools. I believe in our leaders. I believe in our kids and what our teachers can do for our students. And so I'm proud of the effort that I've seen thus far, and I believe this is going to be a great year for us based on the work and the planning that's been done to improve our district academically.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Joyner, Mr. West, Mr. Sanders? All right. I guess we...
Need a motion?
Need a motion to...
I make a motion to accept the district and the individual school improvement plans as presented tonight, please. Second.
I have a motion in a second, and we appreciate all the hard work, and we know it's going to turn things around. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Dr. Artis, you get to stay, don't you?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Tonight, we have before you several purchase orders for your approval. The first is to Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. It's our HMH reading, getting additional readers for our K-two students and K-three classrooms. The next is for our Letters Professional Development that is a part of the NCDPI mandate. The third is for Fred J. Miller, which is the Charles B. Akoc Band Uniforms. The fourth is for Curriculum Associates, and that's for the Elevation Platform that works with our English as a Second Language students. We've already discussed number five. And number six is an amended purchase order. The contract has already been approved. We had to amend the amount because Fremont Stars and Rosewood Elementary were added. We had already had it in the language of the contract that schools could be added or taken off based on accountability results, so we did not have to amend the contract, only the amount. So the amount has already been approved for two hundred and forty thousand. The additional amount is forty-one thousand, I believe, so that's where we are, two hundred and forty-eight plus the forty-one.
Please, just, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We were adding Fremont.
And Rosewood Elementary, yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I would probably recommend drafting a formal amendment on that.
Okay.
Just because you're increasing the price and you're adding services to two different schools, it'd be fine to pass this contract subject to an amendment to add the schools and increase the amount, as long as you all are comfortable with that.
Okay.
And then you'll need to remove number five, since you've already approved that one as a separate item.
Let's do it, you want to go separately then? I make a motion to remove item number five from the, from being a part of this agreement or this contract. Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. All in favor of removing number five, since it's already been voted on. Okay. Okay, I need a motion to approve the other contracts pending the amendment to the Venture Rehab Group and the additional cost.
Some move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you, Dr. Artis.
Thank you so much.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, Dr. Witcher, and members of the board. Your next item coming to you is item N, Brady Service Agreement Renewal. As you may remember, board members, back in September of 2022, the board approved our service agreement for maintenance for Granttham Middle School and Spring Creek Middle School. We reinstated this agreement after we came out of COVID and looked to try to save some funds. We brought this agreement back. At that time, the amount of this agreement was eighty-five thousand four sixty-four. In the adjustment for the price coming to this year, there's an adjustment of two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the two schools, which brings the new price for this coming year to forty-five thousand three hundred for each school, a total of ninety thousand six hundred dollars for the full service agreement for Granttham Middle School and Spring Creek Middle School. So we're asking tonight for you to approve this agreement and the price adjustment. I'll let Mr. Grossgroth help me as well with the motion, because we may need an addendum to the contract for the new price coming up for this school year.
Yes, I'd recommend drafting an amendment for both of these contracts to just acknowledge the price change. I would also do these motions separately, since I believe they're treated as two separate contracts, so I would have a motion for each one of them to pass them pending drafting an amendment to reflect the price change for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I will start with Granttham Middle School. Do I have a motion as stated?
I make a motion to amend the contract to Granttham Middle School, pass pending legal review at the price increase. Second.
It should be a motion to accept the contract and with an amendment drafted pending legal review to reflect the price change.
I make a motion as worded by Mr. Attorney. Second.
We have a motion in a second for Granttham Middle School. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? Now on to Spring Creek Middle School.
I make a motion to accept the amendment for what Mr. Attorney says to change the price in contract for Spring Creek Middle School. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The last item I have for you tonight, members of the board, is item O, Support Service PO Approval. These are the POs coming to you requesting your approval tonight for support services. First, you have Convenient Glass. You'll see several of these from Convenient Glass, and this is as we move to accomplish the safety goals that the board has for this county and getting our safety vestibules in place in our schools that do not have adequate safety vestibules at this time. So you see several of these. You see Convenient Glass for a safety vestibule at Brogdon Middle School in the amount of forty-one thousand nine twenty-five. Of course, this is coming from the local appropriation of fund balance that the board appropriated for safety improvements throughout the district. Item two is again Convenient Glass for safety vestibule at Brogdon Primary. This is twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item three is safety vestibule at Carver Elementary School in the amount of forty-three thousand seven seventy-five. Item four, again the same vendor, safety vestibule at Mount Olive Middle School in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Item five is safety vestibule at North Drive Elementary School in the amount of forty-one thousand six ninety-five. You may have some questions as to why there's price variance. If you look through your documents, you'll see that in some schools, there was more requirements to be able to have our secure vestibules in, in place. The last two items on this list are item six, wind supply out of Greenville, which is a hot water heater for Carver Elementary School, to be paid out of Capital Fund Four in the amount of forty-five thousand five hundred twelve dollars and seventy-three cent. This supplies the cafeteria. Item seven is a PO request from Whites International for blanket PO to come out of state, PRCO fifty-six, which is state transportation funds in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is for supplies and repair items for school buses.
One question.
Yes, sir.
With all these five safety vestibules being put in place, how many does that leave us with that still need to be done, do you know?
I didn't bring that list with me, Mr. Chair, but I can get that for you. We are very close, so our goal has been, of course, to do the elementary, middle schools that we're working through where we do not have something in place. Doesn't mean we don't have access control, right? So we, we have locked doors and access control. What we're trying here is to go to the next level that the board has asked for, to have that true safety vestibule like what you have seen at Meadow Lane, what Fremont will have in all of our schools, where the office door is inside the controlled space. And then once we've accomplished this, we will move into that for our high schools.
Okay, very good.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Maybe I'm missing it, but what size water heater are we looking at putting in?
I'd have to look for more details, Mr. Joyner.
Well, I'm looking at the order. I don't see the size. That's what I was wondering, because we got to be getting a boiler state by that point.
Yeah, we're getting, well, as a pressure vessel. We did the same one, I think, at Tommy's Road. The board approved several months ago, and the price was comparable.
Okay.
Let me ask you, we got some additional funding from the state to beef up our security in our buildings. I guess, does that go straight into the local? Is that why this is being paid out at the local? We already spent that, or that was last year? Or maybe it was...
Last year, we, we applied for some grant fund for our SROs and for other items that we received, and we have some of that money that, that was, we use it for technology when it comes to our intercoms and updating those across our school system. We've not, to my knowledge, we've not received any funds that we utilize for safety vestibules or back from the state, yet.
So this, the boot school fund is still coming from what we technically designated for the elementary schools at the time?
Yes, sir.
And this is still well within the budget?
Yes, yes, as far as what you identified and present.
Okay. Good. Very good. Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the Support Services POs?
Some move. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I may have done something out of order earlier. I read that proclamation. Is it something we need to vote on, the proclamation, Alex?
You guys have it listed as board action, so it should be voted on.
Okay. I apologize. I got happy reading my, my part as well, I guess, so. I make a motion to do the parent and family engagement proclamation.
To approve it?
To approve it, please. Second, Mr. Chair.
All righty, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Witcher, board members, I appreciate the opportunity to share our final business item here under board action, and that is the College Advisoring Corps MOU with Southern Wayne High School and Spring Creek High School. This is a continuation of a current agreement we have with them. We have added some language specific to surveys and reportables, just to beef up the language specific to parent bill rights, and also making sure that anybody serving as a college advisor understands our board policies around reporting sexual abuse or assaults or other issues. This has been legally reviewed. We are seeking to have the approval by the board pending final legal review. We're finalizing it with NC State University. So again, this is a motion to approve the College Advisoring Corps MOUs with Spring Creek High School and Southern Wayne pending final legal review.
Okay, any questions on these? This is a continuation of what we've already done.
That's correct, and it places a college advisor at each of these schools to help kids find paths towards higher education.
No questions? I need a motion to approve these MOUs.
Some move.
You want to do them separately, or...
It's fine to say just both MOUs pending legal review.
All right.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you for your support.
Yes. Consent agenda.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and are items of routine business and have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda and making sure that everything stays confidential that needs to be covered.
You don't have to worry about that on this one.
Don't have to do that anymore?
No, not, not on this one. You don't have closed session minutes on it.
All right, oh, yeah, good. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor? All right, that gets us to board member superintendent comments. Mr. Joyner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I would like to first commend Reverend Cole. I've known Mr. Cole for a long, long time. I think he does outstanding work, so I commend him on the, the efforts he's making to help with the homeless and the McKinney-Vento students. I do appreciate that. I do want to also express to people, let them know that we have been very satisfied, as mentioned, with Meadow Lane and Fremont with their school designs, and those schools have an excellent design to demonstrate school safety. So therefore, we really like that particular model for the Brogdon Primary one, because it addresses, one of the things that's very dear to all of us, is that school safety model. And not only that, it shows the board is trying to be good stewards of their money, because we're using a, a design that's already been purchased by us with the plans and things, so it really helps with that, so I'm glad we're moving forward with that. Also pleased, like Mr. West said, with the work that we've had with the group with the Fremont Realignment Contract, once again, by using this company, they've already had vested interest, once again, a savings to the district to try to, to use that. And it's been mentioned many times, including what Mr. Reverend Cole said, as far as community, it's a community that educates the students. So once again, going back on what Mr. Leatham said about the donations, it's wonderful to see the community that's throwing their, their investments into the schools. To thank Dr. Artis and her team for the school improvement plans, I will tell you, I, I spent a great deal of time going through them, and could really tell there was a focus on specific SMART goals, you know? So thank you very much for that. And finally, just thank for the Dr. Harold for the work on those safety vestibules. Continue making our schools safer. Thank you, thank you so much for that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. West?
I'd just like to say, you know, tonight's a great example of what goes on in Wayne County Public Schools, you know? What a wonderful night to recognize the hard work of our administrators, our central office staff, our superintendent, and the boards for supporting them. There are, we have many, many good things that come out of Wayne County Public Schools in spite of the obstacles that we face. So I just want to say again, congratulations to everyone that stood here tonight and all those hopefully that will be standing here at the end of the year that weren't here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Witcher, for your, for your leadership, and I'm, I'm just really impressed with, with what you're doing with Wayne County Public Schools, and thank you for what you do. And thank the staff at this office, and thank every teacher, administrator, custodian, bus driver. I mean, it's, it's a difficult task. We struggle sometimes, like every district in the country does, but you know, the, the thing is, we get up and we find ways to, to make it better. And I just want to say thank you to everybody for, for the hard work and, and for the support that this board gives to each and every one of you to make it a better school district for our students, our staff, and our parents. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I agree with Bill and Chris, and I'm very encouraged by what I'm seeing and hearing, and I appreciate the hard work. And I think we got the right team in place to move this thing forward. Thank you.
Something that Dr. Witcher said a little while ago really kind of strikes home, and that's the fact that it's very easy to put out negative press, very, very easy, but it's not as easy to see positive press. And I think what we're trying to show here is there are a lot more positives going on in Wayne County Public Schools than there are negatives. in Wayne County Public Schools than there are negatives. And I just want to appreciate, I appreciate everybody and all the hard work they're doing. I know school improvement plans are a bear to get done right and to show actual data that you can base things off of. And I know that they're, they've been, both in the district and the schools, it's been a very big emphasis on making sure we're not just paying lip service to those, that we're actually doing the things we say we want to and need to do to improve our schools and help our students do well. So I take my hat off to everyone. I will again say thank you to all the community participants and individuals who donate to our public schools, and PTAs, everybody. So thank you so much. And with that, Dr. Richard, I'm going to ask you if you've got any comments for us.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've got two, well, three really good news items this evening. So proud of Andrew Bass and his work as our district math coordinator. I received a letter from the Borough's Welcome Fund just this past week. And it says, "On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Borough's Welcome Fund, or BWF, and members of the Student STEM Enrichment Program Advisory Committee, it is a pleasure to inform you that Wayne County Public Schools is awarded a 2023 Student STEM Enrichment Program Award. Our hearty congratulations. The 2023 grants are the 26th cycle of these awards to be made. The Borough's Welcome Funds grant in the amount of one-hundred and eighty thousand dollars is intended to support the project titled STEM Adventures." So I can't say enough good things about what's going on with Andrew and his program. Andrew is such a wealth of knowledge, but just besides that, he's just a nice guy in what he does to work with our staff and our students. And so I really appreciate his initiative and effort in securing that grant award, which will be a real bright light for our students in the Summer Enrichment Program. I'm also pleased, I received a notification from Carla Smith, principal out at Carver School in Mount Olive. And it says, "I'm so proud of Carver and two of my teachers. We wrote a North Carolina Youth Outdoor Grant for five thousand dollars, and on Friday found out that we won. We have also written a Bright Ideas Grant to enhance this project." And so they are hopefully going to be a recipient of that. And they've included some pictures, but part of the learning space is going to be outside, little tables in a little rock bed area with a little canopy over the top. You can imagine how nice that'll be for the students to be able to work outside and enjoy nice days, much like we've been having lately. So it'll be a great enhancement to the school. Also, very pleased and thankful for Chairman Latham for his work. As you know, we had on the back wall, we've been doing a little bit of renovation around here to improve the space for our principals' meetings and leadership functions within the district. But Chairman Latham met with the Presidential Honor Guard of the Air Force and had them to refold our flag, which had kind of gotten a little lacking. And you know, particularly here in Wayne County, Goldsboro, home of the Fourth Fighter Wing for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, we take our flag business very seriously. And I'm just very proud of the work that they were able to do to resecure that. And so now, as I discussed with Chairman Latham, we've been able to speak, I spoke today with Kevin Smith, who's going to work with Southern Wayne students. I think it would be a great thing for our students to get involved with this project, create, build a new box, and to properly house this important flag. Put it on pedestal, so it'll be here in our boardroom for recognition. And also, they gave a very nice framed photo of each of the members of the Honor Guard and their work standing in front of the White House that will also put with this for our boardroom. So just a nice piece, very beautifully put together, that we can recognize what our men and women do for our country and the sacrifices that they give on a daily basis. So again, just thankful for that opportunity. Thank you.
Alex, you got anything from legal?
Nope.
Alright. With that said, I need a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? For adjourned. It was an hour, not thirty?